We have four of seven, so we do have quorum.
Thank you.
And we are expecting Ashley to join us shortly. But Chair, the mic is yours.
Okay. So the first step is to call to order or read the executive session notice?
We'll go ahead and call to order.
Okay, so as acting chair, I am calling the meeting of the Board of Directors for, or Board of Commissioners for the City of Flagstaff Housing Authority to order. We will start with roll call. Chair Brenda Silvias is absent. Vice Chair Moses Malazo here. Mayor Becky Daggett.
Here.
Ashley Page, I believe, is going to join us late. Lorena Knapp.
Here.
Nadine Hart.
We did not receive an RSCP from Nadine, and she has not logged in.
Okay. Tatum Covey.
Here.
And I believe we don't need to call roll call for the city staff, or do you want me to do that as well?
We don't need roll call for staff.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to action or item number three, preliminary business. At this time, any member of the public may address the board on any subject within the board's jurisdiction that is not on this meeting's agenda. The Arizona Open Meeting Law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on an item that is not listed on the prepared agenda. Commissioners may however respond to criticism made by those addressing the board, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. To address the board on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. So Caleb, I don't know if you noticed, but Ashley has joined us. Welcome, Ashley. So Caleb, do we have any members of the public who would like to make comments either via email or on the live Teams meeting?
I have not received any comments at this time. I do want to add that Dixie Barlow is joining us. She is a temporary worker with us. So she is an unfamiliar name, I suspect. But she is joining us as a staff person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so not seeing any hands up and not seeing any emails for public comment. Let's move to item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 4th, 2025. Do we have any discussion? I hear, see no comment questions in the chat. I see no hands. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 4, 2025?
I'll move.
That was Mayor Becky Daggett. Do I have a second?
This is Ashley.
Okay. I believe Ashley spoke up just before Tatum, so we have a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye or indicate in the chat.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain from voting since I was not here, so I believe that means the approval has been passed, and we will move to section five, action items. I believe Sarah will be presenting.
That's me. Good morning, board. Thank you so much for being available for a reschedule of a meeting since we have Juneteenth to celebrate this week on Thursday. And I am looking for the screen to share. There we go. I know that I sent these out late last evening. Please do not stress or even think about anything. If you have not had time to look them over, we're going to go through them in detail today. The main item before us is a consideration of amendments to our Section 8 administrative plan related to the transfer of the City of Williams Housing Choice Voucher Program. Let me give you a little update on where we are with that prior to jumping into this. We did receive a HUD letter of approval on May 1st. However, it does not acknowledge in writing any of the conditions set forward by this body and city council. It was, you know, congratulations. This is great. We're moving forward. Yay! And so we wrote back and said, that's great. What about the conditions that we put upon accepting the program? As a quick reminder of what those are, is to be held fully harmless, both financially and programmatically, which this one's kind of a formality, because that is the intent behind the program transfer. I'd like something more in writing to that. That we also be held harmless for all matters occurring after the transfer date of July 1 for up to two years. After that, for any matters occurring but not discovered prior to or within the first year of the transfer date. So if it looked, if it's on our books, but it's not our doing, we would, we need to be held harmless. Programmatically waiver of CMAP, which is the Section 8 Management Assistance P program. Thank you for the patience with that, which is the scoring criteria that is applied to the program. We are traditionally a high scorer. Last year, our CMAP score was 96%. And it went up after a clerical error on HUD's part was corrected. And so we don't want to jeopardize our high performing score in the voucher program by taking on these additional vouchers. So we've also asked for 12 monthly sub-time for the 50 transferred vouchers and technical assistance. So HUD, Phoenix has sent me a draft letter acknowledging the conditions. Doesn't quite get there. I'm actually going to just rewrite it myself with the language in there that we would need and send it back. This is not a dig at our Phoenix HUD office. As we've discussed previously, their staffing is quite light. And I think folks are working, I mean, they're down to a staff of three from a staff of eight or nine. And the field office, the Public and Indian Housing Director is also right now, who is Bill Rhodes, who we've been working with, is now also serving as the acting field office director for Phoenix overall. So there's a fair amount on his plate. Thus, my bold step of just rewriting it and being like, here you go, here's some text for you to use. This is what we're looking for. So what you're going to see in this document, I want to give you a heads up so your mind isn't constantly wondering about what about, what about? In this amendment, you are not going to see expansion to Belmont or surrounding areas yet. This is a purely administrative action we can do without an additional public process to set ourselves up to adequately, more than adequately, to be able to incorporate the Williams program into ours. I'm going to get into that detail a little bit later. We will be bringing that forward for your consideration. It's not in this amendment, so I'll get into a little bit more about that. Any questions based on what I've said so far before I jump into this one? Okey dokey. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom through some background. Let me know if the font is not big enough for you to see. A quick reminder of what the admin plan is, is it's a HUD required policy document that sets forth how we do things locally, and it guides our decisions pertaining to program elements. A lot of this document is dictated by federal statute and HUD regulation, but it also contains the policies that we are able to set locally. In many cases, HUD regulations says what? It doesn't say how. So in this document, we get to say how. The current admin plan was updated and adopted by the board in 2023, and it was last amended in December 2024, which was the mainstream program amendment. I want you to keep in mind that this document pertains only to our voucher programs, only to Section 8. It does not apply to public housing. So if you're like, well, why doesn't that say this, or why, why are we ignoring that? It's because the public housing program has a separate document called the ACOP. And so this one, vouchers only. So the amendments you'll see today are necessary to accommodate the transfer and incorporation. This one does not require any additional public process, as both you, Board of Commissioners, and City Council approved the transfer in previous actions, so we're able to build upon that approval. As I go through these amendments, you'll see that the new text is reflected in red, and the removed text is struck through. Unchanged text remains black. I did not attach all 238 pages of the plan. For your perusal, I am happy to provide it to you. If you wish, it is available on our website. I pulled out only the sections that we are amending at this point in time. First and foremost is the changing of our jurisdiction. And so this is amended to include the City of Williams corporate city limits with technical and conforming changes throughout the admin plan. Let me tell you what that means. If approved, this gives staff the ability to go through the entire admin plan and update the language to CFHA jurisdiction throughout the document where it says Flagstaff. In the past, we've said Flagstaff, and Flagstaff was defined here in the black text, including ZIP codes 01 through 011. Given that we are now going to be including the corporate city limits of Williams, that will expand the jurisdiction. The other request for these technical and conforming changes are so that if the board and city council approve expanding our local preferences and our service area into areas such as Belmont, we're able to make a change here in the jurisdiction section. And because we will do the technical and conforming changes throughout, it will reduce the number of changes to be made. It'll make the document easier to use over time. Technical and conforming changes means they're, they're not substantive, that they are only reflective of the change that is approved in this area. So the proposed language is to, within the corporate boundaries of the City of Flagstaff and specific surrounding areas, it leaves our ZIP codes the same and includes the corporate city limits of Williams. Questions there before I move on?
Yeah, Sarah, I have a question. The way this is written right now, if the City of Williams decides to expand its corporate city limits, our jurisdiction expands as well to those new. Is, is that ever going to be a concern? If, I don't know if it could be a concern or not. It's just something that I'm wondering about.
So, thank you, Moses. That's a very, very fair question, and I, I thought that through. Our intent with corporate city limits of Williams is for any area on water, like which utility is it? That we are not going outside city limits dealing with utilities around water hauling, et cetera. If Williams were to expand, were to annex an area, likely water services, if they have the capacity, would be installed there. We would also be able to amend this should that happen.
Okay, so the, the language here doesn't indicate that desired restriction to servicing areas with utilities such as water. It just says within the corporate city limits. Does that put us potentially in a bind where somebody puts in a request for coverage of hauling water to their, their place with, with a voucher?
All dwelling units in the City of Williams, city limits are served by city water service, which is why it's the city limits of Williams and not the ZIP code that Williams is located in.
Okay. And we expect the city limits, even if they do change via annexing, that they will still keep it to where they can serve water to the residents?
Typically, that's one of the considerations with a municipal annexation. If they don't, we can, we can come back and amend. We, we thought, we thought about it, and are we gonna, are we gonna talk about water hauling, not water hauling, and tried to simplify it down? I had confirmed with the city manager and mayor in Williams way back in this process that utilizing city limits provides that delineation between hauling water or on municipal water service.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to belabor the point.
No, no, no. It's very important people understand this. I really appreciate it. So maximum subsidy, this area allows separate payment standards to be set for the Flagstaff area and Williams corporate boundaries. While fair market rent, which is the amount a voucher is worth, is set for all of Coconino County. We know that the market conditions in Flagstaff are very different than the market conditions in Williams. And the payment standards, historically, Williams has not looked for exceptions to those payment standards that Flagstaff has, as we know that there is a longstanding disconnect between how expensive rent in Flagstaff is and what the fair market rents are actually set at. So this gives us the ability to have separate payment standards for Flagstaff and surrounding ZIP codes and Williams. I chose the word may. A separate payment standard may be set for Williams. That's because the market changes. And if it becomes where all the stars and fair market rent align, we may have a situation where we don't need a separate payment standard for Williams, but this allows us to do so. At least in the, in the coming years, I anticipate that they will be separate, but I didn't want to put in a requirement if it's not necessary. It would simplify it for program participants, et cetera. So we, we can set it separately. The criteria listed in 9.3.1 doesn't change. Those are taken into consideration, things we've discussed before. How long it takes a household to lease up, the success rates, what the current rent is for a two-bedroom apartment, et cetera. And these are all of the things that we look at every fall when we bring to you payment standards for approval. Questions there? Okey dokey. This is similarly, this is similar for utility allowance. And this one is a will. So separate utility allowance, allowance schedules will be created for 01 through 11 as a whole in the city limits of Williams. So many things are the same. Our electrical provider, our natural gas providers, et cetera, are the same. Water's the bigger difference here, but also are the consumption rates. And so when we are, are looking at utility allowances, determine based on the typical cost of utilities and services paid by energy conserving households that occupy housing of a similar size or type in ZIP codes. This would be one of those technical and conforming changes. In developing the schedule, we will use normal patterns of consumptions. There's reports that we pull from the utilities within our community to get a normal pattern of consumption as a whole, and then the respective current utility rates separately for the city limits of Williams and respective current utility rates, so that we are calculating utility allowances for the utilities that are actually being utilized in the units that are being rented. This one, I'm also asking for conforming changes. As I was reading through here, I may have missed one of these pieces. The technical conforming changes with jurisdiction will help this. But if there is anything within utilities at this point that my eyes did not catch, this would let us go ahead and clarify in those sections of the admin plan. The intent behind this is to utilize separate, the, the utilities that are actually in the respective communities. Thoughts, questions on this one?
I have one. But I'll wait to see if anyone else does. Did you say always?
No, 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 no. I didn't say always. I would, but not usually in a formal meeting like this.
So you use the term normal here, and being a mathematician, I want that well defined. Do you mean average? Do you mean median? What do you mean by normal patterns of consumption?
I mean that this is the language that has been in the plan, and I didn't change it. I can go look and see what, ooh, Caleb's got his hand up. Help me, Caleb.
So we do reassess the average usage by looking at like units. So all four bedrooms in Siler, for example, and we average that consumption to then set that utility allowance for the water consumption as an example. And we have a release that allows us to use those, those billing statements to calculate that every year.
Thank you, Caleb. Could you remind me the number of units that would be in play here in, in these particular spaces in Williams, for example?
The number of residential units?
Yeah, yeah. So like, are there, I know that we have 50-ish vouchers, but how many units would there be likely to be? Is it going to be 50 as well?
Likely not in the City of Williams. That's one of the reasons for the program transfer, is they don't have the rental units available. And so right now, we believe that there are between 17 and 22 vouchers leased in the community. Hopefully after July 1, we get a little more accurate data on that. But we don't limit it just to those units. We actually work with the utility companies as well. And I can clarify normal and bring that forward in the set of amendments this fall.
Okay. My only comment on average is it can be heavily influenced by outliers. So if somebody uses a whole lot or uses very little. So personally, I would use median rather than average. You have enough units that the median will give you a better representative value. But whatever the standard is, is probably the better way to go.
And what I can do with that is clarify if normal is a HUD standard, which wouldn't surprise me if it is. And so I can get you additional information on that. And if necessary, we'll bring that forward in the amendments in the fall. Does that work? Oh, very welcome. And I did just identify a typo right here. That's what I get for working late. We would be able, with technical and conforming changes, I would be able to fix that without your approval, without your separate approval. All right. Utility allowances. All right, Appendix 11 has to do with our use of HUD's Enterprise verification, Enterprise Income Verification System, which we call EIV. EIV is a database where we're able to compare reported income to income that was reported to federal government for tax purposes. Caleb, did I say that right?
You did.
Okay. Sometimes I get mixed up on the, all of the different systems. So this is a recommendation from staff, is that we grant a special exemption for former Williams participants. The word is former because July 1, they will be ours. They will not be Williams. So the language here, and this, the to sunset June 30, 2026, means that this section would no longer be effective after June 30, 2026. But we don't have to come back to the board for an amendment to remove it. It just automatically expires with that language in there. So staff's request is that from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, so this coming fiscal year, that EIV will not be reviewed, nor any retroactive rent charged to participants in the former Williams jurisdiction for periods prior to the household's first effective recertification date as our participant. Let me tell you what that means. So we're going to have participant household number one. If it turns out that their rent should have been higher because of an adjustment in their income, that rent retroactively would not be charged to that participant. Why would we do that? Well, because there has not been a functional way for these participants to have their rent adjusted, either up or down. So without this, those households will be penalized for the actions of Williams Housing Authority not having the capacity to do this. Our intent here is to bring them into our program, do the recertification, and have them move forward with their rent number for there. If in the case that rent was overpaid, that's a different conversation for a landlord. If Williams Housing Authority overpaid the landlord based on the rents not being able to be adjusted. But this is to protect the participants. Why did we do for a year? The, the regulation that speaks to how a program transfer is made speaks to that each household, we don't have to go in on day one and meet with everybody and change everything immediately. It's actually built around a household's recertification date. So at a date no later than their regularly scheduled recertification date, not to exceed one year from date of program transfer, the, the household would be recertified and numbers move forward from there. The HUD federal reporting systems, computer systems that we report into have, if this is, this is language from program staff, they have effective recertification dates. If we were to go in and recertify everybody right off the bat, it's going to potentially create some issues within the federal system. We might have a way around that. So this does not preclude us from getting folks into a better spot faster. But if it causes federal reporting issues, this does allow this, us to comply with the federal prescription for how we would incorporate these households. I see Caleb has his hand up. Caleb, you have something to add here?
I may offer a slight revision of what you have written here, that EIV will not be reviewed for the purposes of determining any retroactive rent charges, because EIV review also gives us information for things like social security and other benefit pack benefits. So I want to make that clear, because if we do not review EIV, then that may, we would not be, we'd be missing income that they tell, that we, that they wanted us to know about. And that would be, this would be about going forward, not about going backward. And I've got that text in the chat. I'll go ahead and send that now.
Well, this is for periods prior to their first effective recertification date. So we can still access EIV and use it, just not retroactively.
Okay.
Does that address your concern?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that.
I'm gonna interject. I think that doesn't, with that comma there, I think it says it won't be reviewed, period. And so I think that Caleb's slight change might help with you not getting into trouble for, for looking at past income and seeing that income has reduced or something like that.
Okay.
My reading is that it won't be reviewed at all, and then that cuts off the ability to look at their past income and, and prior to this, this change. So I think that it, I think Caleb's recommendation makes sense to me.
Would a simplification of that language be, will not be reviewed retroactively?
I guess maybe, I guess it depends on my understanding of how do you look at, say, somebody in this system is. how do you look at, say, somebody in this um system is say their, their income has changed between um July first twenty twenty-five and Ju- June thirty twenty twenty-six. If their income goes down, how do you account for that in their um recertification date? I guess you just look at the income that they have on recertification date as a CFHA participant.
Correct. We would be looking at that income and then after that recertification date, um, things would resume as normal. So it would only be to that point of recertification date. I'm happy putting your purpose of determining any retroactive rent changes. Um, I'm fine putting Caleb's language in here if that is the desire of the board. Um, when someone, I'm, I'm thinking optimistically, when someone makes a motion, if they say with uh move to approve with recommended language change in Appendix eleven, uh that will incorporate it. Thank you for that feedback.
Well, I'm the only one who spoke and I want to give other board members a chance to speak up if they'd like to.
I don't see any comments or questions in the chats, uh and I don't see any raised hands presently.
Thank you. All right, I promised you a little bit more information on upcoming amendments. So um, there are some recommended amendments that we don't have enough information yet to determine if they're necessary. For example, is how um of a waiting list from Williams for the voucher program would be incorporated into ours. Um, there is a methodology, it is a recommended methodology, but bringing this change forward is premature and perhaps even unnecessary because we don't know if they have a viable waiting list. So instead of adding language into the admin plan that um would be unnecessary um at this point in time, we're holding off on those till we have a little more information. This will not um cripple our ability to do what we need to do. We would not, we don't anticipate issuing new vouchers out of these um for at least the first probably sixty to ninety days while we get our feet underneath us and figure out what, how many we actually even have to issue since we don't have current program participant information. Secondly, this is the, the reasoning behind holding off on um expanding the leasing area, et cetera, is that to make those changes, we must have an additional public process um with a minimum of a forty-five day public comment period, a public meeting, et cetera. Um, you approve the change, it goes to HUD, HUD approves it. Um. And we've encountered, I'll, I'll share in a bit about a staffing challenge we've encountered. We have not started this process. Um, however, it is our full intent to do so based on the feedback from both the board and city council to include Belmont and potentially other nearby areas. Um, we've also had a discussion of discussing, a discussion of discussing, yep, we've done that, of um I've also been discussing residency or employment in other areas, other neighborhood areas qualifying for local preference, even if expanding the leasing area is determined to be administratively burdensome. Um, just as like a, a foreshadowing of what is coming forward to you. We've, we've done research on what expanding um our leasing area would be in some areas where there's water hauling or there is um a greater geographic distance. Um, it may not make sense for us to expand our leasing area into those areas, especially when there's not a lot of homes. But what we could do is make those areas, because they are immediately adjacent to our community, maybe a little bit more distance, qualify for local preference. And so we will be bringing that forward. That also has to go through the, the additional public process. So we anticipate bringing um other amendments to the admin plan in either August or September when we have a little bit more information and we've been able to initiate um this ad- additional public process. Questions surrounding that? Okey dokey. There's a, a fascinating little piece in here. If I can get the resolution to open, there we go. All right, resolution, all of our whereas is, um, the bulk of the beginning ones are all um HUD asked us to do this, Williams is in favor. Our board met on March fourth and approved recommending, a resolution recommending city council accept the transfer. City council approved resolution accepting the transfer with conditions. Whereas HUD sent a letter approving the transfer without recognizing the conditions. And whereas HUD has indicated the conditions will be recognized in writing prior to the July one effective date for the program transfer. And the amendment of this is required to reflect the acceptance and incorporation of the voucher program. Um, now, therefore, it be resolved that the board hereby approves of the attached amendment to the CFHA Section Eight Administrative Plan. Here is the strange condition. We don't usually see things like this in an amendment or in a resolution. But I changed the effective date is should the expected acknowledgement of conditions of program acceptance from HUD be received from HUD, this resolution shall become effective on July one. If no such acknowledgement of conditions is received prior to July one, this resolution shall become effective upon receipt of the acknowledgements. Which gives us the ability to um still have the amendment go into effect even if the acknowledgements are not received prior to July one. As a quick reminder, the fact that the board and city council said we will accept this transfer with these conditions. Without those conditions, um, we are not required to accept this transfer. Do I want to do that? No, no, I do not. Um, which is why I will be rewriting the acknowledgement letter from HUD and sending it back um with some very specific language um that we need to have in writing from then for the assurances of protections of our agency, um, our municipality and the program itself. So we have those questions around the um, well, anything within the resolution?
I don't see any comments or questions from the board. Um, I think now it's time to open it up for public comment. If anybody, members of the public have any comments on this? See no activity in teams. Caleb, did you receive any email comments about this particular item?
No, I have received regular communication from Williams, both uh residents seeking information at the program and from landlords looking for updates. But I've not received anything that's specifically in writing to be presented to the board. Uh, so I'm not able to represent those, uh, and I don't wish to uh, you know, put words out of people's mouths. I'd rather read those if I had them. So thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Are there any trends in the questions and their comments from residents in the city?
Um, it's I think there's an eagerness for these programs to continue to serve Williams. Uh, and uh, they're looking for answers that is this process helps us then provide, hey, here's when this is starting, this is how to do this. In the meantime, the guidance has been what we consistently provide is say, hey, please apply and um uh, for our services because this is, process is underway. So I, I don't have anything more to sort of summarize those thoughts and, yeah, at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, I will open it up to the board for comments, questions? Okay, so Sarah has presented us with this resolution. Um, we have several options. We can adopt the resolution as written. We can adopt the resolution with changes as directed during the meeting. We can request that alternate policy be written, or we can choose to disapprove the resolution or remain under the current admin plan. Um, do we have anyone who would like to propose a motion? Make a motion?
I'll move.
What will you move?
I'll move a lot of things. All right, let me pull up, I mean, just, I move that we adopt the resolution with the um amendment suggested by Caleb.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
I have a hand up from Ashley.
I'm in agreement with Ducky, Becky.
Would you like to be the second?
Please, I would like to second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution with changes as directed uh specifically with the um text as written by Caleb. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, Sarah, we have adopted the resolution uh with those, that minor modification.
Thank you so very much. I really, really appreciate it and we will get on changes. Dixie, as Caleb uh mentioned earlier, um is a temporary staff member who is decreasing my stress level on a daily basis. Um, she's actually going to be working in the admin plan to make those amendments reflected throughout.
Great. All right, we are on to item number six, Director's Report. Back to you, Sarah.
Thank you. Um, I have a fair number of things as it's been a pretty, a pretty busy time. So we talked about the Williams update. I don't have anything to share outside of that um that we've already discussed. We will be putting together a, a transition schedule um, once we get final information. Um, I mentioned staffing within the local office and the staffing decreases there. Um, I do have to say though that the response time for inquiries or things that we send in for approval has been incredibly fast. Um, in speaking with the field office director, he, he said that they're reviewing things and if it looks good, approvals are going out. So we don't feel neglected. We do know that his time is pulled in many directions and occasionally a gentle, hey, don't forget X, email is sent of which they're incredibly responsive to. So um keep them in your thoughts as this is a, a difficult time for our local field office, our regional office, et cetera. Um, there's some people working very, very hard to keep programs, et cetera, operating. I do know that in other offices, folks are maybe short on uh staffing but do still have a sense of humor. Um, I share this with the board because um it gave me some hope um for head staff, but we got a notice that there was a potential discrepancy in some of our federal reporting. And it gave us a deadline two weeks before they sent us the email. So I asked for some clarification for that and received an email back from this HUD office that said um that use of time machines was now mandatory for all housing authorities. Um, and they expect them to be utilized in the future. Um, if we couldn't afford to procure one to continue to email, but in the meantime, the deadline is two weeks from the date of receipt. And so I answered back that we would look for some capital funds to purchase a time machine. And um, we're not going to write it into our five-year plan, I promise you. But there are some folks um working in some dire circumstances who are still finding a moment of humor within their workday. That gave me a little bit of hope for the federal staff. Um, keeping up with news, um, I don't know if you've seen or not, there are some pretty um, there are some things within the president's budget that, that make my stomach hurt. I want to tell you this, is that typically the presidents, and I'm reading from, this quote is from the newsletter from one of our professional organizations. And our federal lobbyist for the city of Flagstaff tells us the same thing, is that typically the president's proposed budget is a messaging document that is unlikely to become law and Congress retains the final authority in deciding the contours of the fiscal year twenty-six budget. With that said, that does not mean that we are not watching and paying attention. There's some pretty drastic changes proposed. Um, I'm not reading buzz around those um items that there's actually much traction um that's happening surrounding them. Some of the blocks, it's, one of them proposes block granting uh public housing funds to the states at a massive reduction. Um, and then the states would allocate funding out to us. I don't know about a lot of other states, but I do know ours does not, without additional funding, have the the um staffing capacity to conduct such a process, et cetera. So we are not panicking. Um, we are watching and we are continuing to be good stewards of public money. So, speaking of money, we are watching that federal process closely. We have received our funding amounts for calendar year twenty-five. I think I mentioned in a previous board meeting, they went up in almost every category. And not a lot, but modestly. Um, the new vouchers coming in from Williams will help the Section Eight program with a little bit additional stability there. Public housing is strong. Our, our rent receipts, because of our local minimum wage, are, are strong. Um, as is our subsidy from HUD. We're able to, to bank some of that money. We will have a year-end statement for you, I believe, at the August meeting. And that was the financing piece. Um. Redevelopment, the RAD process, we had a meeting just this morning to review the RFP responses. We put out an RFP to identify a project management and consulting firm to help us carry forward redevelopment of our public housing properties. We received three responses, which was actually pretty exciting. Um, and there is a clear, one of the three is clearly above the other two. We had that meeting this morning. We're going to be checking references, et cetera. Um, this contract will ultimately include financial analysis components as well to the overall project management. Um. So excited that that, that is moving forward. This is not the developer. Selecting a development partner will come later, but this group will help us get everything together and then assist in identifying a developer. We will come back to you with an in-depth presentation of what this means and what what are the details surrounding redevelopment of public housing. Um, but we need to get this piece moving. And um I can't decide. I have some good news and I have some bad news. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to share the more difficult news first. Um, as you may remember, it's not customary for me to present changes to our administrative documents. That usually comes from Kurt, who is the compliance and reporting uh manager for the Housing Authority. And um Kurt is out. He was out without notice. He's been diagnosed with stage four cancer, lung cancer that has traveled to his brain. Not sharing out of school. Um, he has been very upfront. He and his wife have said, share um as you see fit. Um, I have not heard from them in two and a half weeks. Um, Kurt, if you're familiar with Kurt at all, housing is a part of who he is as a human being and he wants to come back. Although his doctors are saying that he needs to use his leave and retire, as is his wife, who's a lovely human. Um, and so we're figuring it out. Kurt was set to retire. Kurt was set to retire at the end of June twenty twenty-seven. And um he and I had discussed the transition plan, knowledge transfer for that retirement starting on July one of this year. That's not happening. He was in the office on April twenty eighth and has not been back since that day. So we've been in a bit of a scramble. There are certain things that only Kurt does. So we're figuring it out. I want to say we have encountered patience and grace from every oversight agency we interact with. Um, and we have a little bit of uncertainty here of whether he will be able to return um or will be unable to return. This is also difficult for our staff because we are small staff. And um it's hard to watch a coworker go through such large struggles. So thank you for your patience, as I worked through amendment text, et cetera. Um he Kurt had actually written up proposed amendments for this process. And uh that's what I based my starting place on for these. He's also called while he was out um and said, I want to make sure you're remembering that we uh talked about expanding local preference to areas, even if we can't expand leasing. So we're still on his mind. Um, housing's a part of who he is. I'll keep you updated on him as we go, but we have a lot of uncertainty. And we have a lot of staff picking up other pieces, working to figure them out, keeping them moving and get implementation of things underway. Kurt is an integral part of what we do, and with reporting and compliance, there are a lot of responsibilities that go with that. There are deadlines that can't be moved, et cetera. So um we're figuring it out. That's the not-so-good news. The other good news, the the good news, is that housing overall is becoming its own division within the city organization. We are part of community development right now. We have been since I started twenty-five years ago. Um, and so we are being moved out of community development directly to the city manager's office starting on July one. And we will be an independent division on or around December first. There are some administrative things that have to take place, budget separations and um rewriting job descriptions, all of those things will be about a six-month process or so. So we are becoming our own division. Before this um before this was announced, I was already considering a reorganization of Housing Authority staff to take advantage of some of our strengths um within staff, and I'll be going over that reorganization with you. Um once it's approved by city management, we're finishing job descriptions at this point in time. Um, I've had uh support already indicated via city management. We and Tracy has shown me we can afford it. So this is a really a procedural thing. It is not an ask for funding. It is a, we have the money to do this. Here is what we would like to move, and I think it's going to provide some additional support and efficiencies for our staff. Those were my announcements. Um, I'm open for questions, things you were hoping I would cover that I did not, et cetera. Thank you for the um hearts in the chat. I will let Kurt know. Um, he and his wife have, uh, he and his his wife and I, there we go, have been corresponding periodically as well, so we're able to get messages to him. He is in Phoenix. Um, he is able to get rehab work up here, but not occupational rehab up here. So he's been in Phoenix staying with his son.
Sarah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Becky.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say congratulations, Sarah. Um, this is something that has needed to be done for some time. And um I'm glad that that we are going to unleash the housing section um and unleash you to take us to new heights. And this wouldn't have happened without your leadership and without your skill and everyone's trust in uh you becoming a division director.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate those kind words. I was afraid in the middle of that you're going to say unleash me to run amok, which is similar to what you said, just a little more. Yeah, so thank you. I'm I am excited as well. It gives us a different position, especially with the other side of the House that I oversee where we do development negotiations, et cetera. It puts us in a little bit, actually more than a little bit, of a different position um within the organization to have more meaningful conversations. So thank you.
This is Tatum, just sending more love to Kurt and his family. And if there's anything that we can do to be more supportive of you all, especially knowing that you have additional workload or anything that we could potentially do as a board to be supportive, please let us know.
Thank you. We sincerely appreciate that support. Right now Dixie is my sanity. Um, she is she is uh reviewing Kurt's email on a daily basis and helping us stay on top of things as they come in, et cetera, um among other duties. So uh we will let the board know for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Tatum. I was gonna say something similar and also extend an offer, at least from me, to um help um Kurt and family with uh anything that could be, you know, needed or or desired. So if there's something that um I could help with, please let me know.
Thank you. We've made the offer of of help. Um, the response I've received thus far is that their church community is surrounding them and they feel incredibly supported. We've offered, you know, could we do a meal train? Is there a funding need? Is there a something? Um, Kurt is a very um, I'd say to his face, he's a stubborn man. And so um it's 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 hard to watch him go through this. I will tell you his laugh is back. In fact, when he laughed in the hospital, his wife texted me and said, his laugh, he laughed today. It was breathy and light, but he laughed. And so they're seeing glimpses of him of him coming back. And so thank you for the offer of personal help as well. If if when something comes up, we'll include the board in those correspondence.
Great, thank you, Sarah. And I I'd be happy to sign a card or something as well if that's.
I was thinking about how we get, I have a stack of them somewhere right here with some colored pens. These are my get well cards for us to send Kurt. Um, so on our next one, we will do what we can to get uh board involved with that one.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to item number seven, general business. Do we have any board member comments? I see no hands. I see no comments in the chat, so I will assume no. Uh, the next scheduled meeting is Thursday seventeen July twenty twenty-five at nine a.m. Uh, and I will wait half a second. No, I'm kidding. I will adjourn this meeting at one minute early. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your ongoing commitment.
And Sarah, I assume I will be signing the motion paperwork?
We will send you the amended resolution for signature.
Great, thank you.
No, thank you.